We're gonna try and keep it to about this as much as we can so that everyone has a chance to ask some questions as time allows. And also to make sure that Mitchell has a chance to worship together online later in this meeting. So, without further ado, we're just gonna share a little bit about this adoption process. And then open things up for questions. I guess, one of the first things we should do is give just a tiny, brief history of how we are at this point. And it originally came about most recently, early in 2020, when our superintendent, Scott Harmon, called and asked us if, after talking to the folks at Mitchell, if we would consider the possibility of Mitchell becoming a campus of Marquette Hope. And what would that look like? How would that happen? When would that happen? And to explore that. Now, that moment of decision came after Mitchell had gone through a local church assessment process, where they looked at their history, their present, and options for the future. And so, that process prior to the conversation from our superintendent led to that question. Since we have been asked that, we have tried to start talking about all of these things. We've assembled a team of folks who want to work on adoption from both congregations. And we've been meeting regularly, even through quarantine times, to talk about how this happens. And one of the things we wanted to do was offer this town hall meeting, first of other opportunities to share and answer questions, ask them as well. And so, that's why we are here at this point today. Hopefully, everyone has received a frequently asked questions document. So, some of the things that you might have been wondering about, we've tried to provide you with answers on. We can elaborate on those as well. And we'll certainly have an opportunity for questions here in this town meeting, which is why we're here. Before we get some instructions on how that happens, I think we should introduce the members of our adoption team. So, it's from Marquette Hope, it's Bob Ross, Shane and Jolene Spencer, Erica Thomas. And from Mitchell, it's Al Nelson, Ron Veal, Sherry and Rich Delaney. Yeah.
We're trying to see if they can show themselves there along the top.
Yeah. In just a second, so that we can begin in question and answer time. We're gonna hear some instructions from Erica. Hello. Erica.
All right. Good morning, everyone. I just gotta say that I'm so excited that we're here to have this town hall time and gathered together for Marquette Hope Worship, followed by Nagani Mitchell Worship, and the chance to be together in this space. During this town hall time, obviously forty-five minutes is not enough time for us to cover all the questions that may be out there and curiosities. The hope is that this is the start of a conversation that we can have together between the two congregations that are coming together as one. And so, with that, you may be wondering, how do I ask a question if I have a question? That is a great question. So, there's a couple of ways you can do it. You can raise your hand, which you can do at old school, where you put your hand up. And I will be scrolling through if your video's on, and I'll hopefully be able to see you. Probably not the most effective way, though. If you're able to, in the bottom right-hand corner of your, sorry, in the bottom center of your Zoom screen, where it says Participants, if you click on that, it brings up a window to the right. And at the bottom right-hand of that, there's a button that says Raise Hand. If you raise, if you click that button, it notifies me, the host, that you have a question that you'd like to ask. And then I can call on you when we're able to answer that question, once we've wrapped up the question that's currently going on. So, Bruce here has raised his hand for a moment. He can also lower his hand. So, maybe he had a question, and he put it back down because he thought, oh, someone already asked that, or it just got answered. Or, maybe I want more time to think, right? So, you're able to raise your hand to let me know you have a question. You can also write in the chat box. I believe in the instructions, I said if you go to the chat, you can select not just everyone, but you can select to send to the host. Right now, I am the host. If you send it to Marquette Hope, Chrissy and Christopher will see it on their screen. If you send it to me, then I'll be able to see it and send it out to have someone answer that question of yours. So, either works, but just to give you a heads up, if you send it to me directly, I might be able to get to it quicker. And so, for the questions that we don't get to today, you are more than welcome to email. If you email office@marquettehope.com, that will get sent out to the adoption team to be able to look at and give you a response back. And you can also always give us a call, and that way, we can field your questions that way as well. But, for our time together today, time is precious, so I would like us to get started. And the first question that I'm actually gonna kind of plant here, pun intended, as the seed, is the first question from our frequently asked questions document, which is, what is the purpose of this town hall meeting? Or the town hall meetings? And the purpose of the town hall meetings is to answer and invite any and all questions. Adoption team members will do our best to answer your questions, record questions, and seek answers to questions that need more research. There's also a chance you may ask a question today that we don't have an answer for right now. And that's okay, because we can get there, and we can do the research needed to make sure that we have an answer in the future. So, with that, unless there is something else that Chrissy or Christopher you'd like to add, I think we are ready to start taking some questions. So, does anybody have a question to get us started?
Looks like there's a couple of hands.
Yes. All right. Beth, I see your hand up. Would you like to ask a question?
Yes. My question is, how will it affect, like, the lay servants of the Mitchell United Methodist Church will automatically transfer over?
That's a great question, Beth. Chrissy, Christopher, do you wanna field that one? How will it affect the lay servants of Nagani Mitchell in transferring over?
Thank you, Beth, for your question. Lay servants and all other persons actively involved in positions in ministry at Marquette Hope and at Mitchell, all of that will continue to happen. And you are right, all of the, everyone who is a part of this congregation will be a part of Marquette Hope. So, anywhere where the language says you are a lay servant at Nagani Mitchell, you'll be a lay servant under the Marquette Hope umbrella. And we do sometimes talk about how maybe we are a part of Marquette Hope, and we worship at First Campus, or we worship at the Connection Center, or you primarily have lay servant responsibility at Nagani Mitchell campus, but we're all under that Marquette Hope umbrella. So, yes, that will simply just happen automatically.
Thank you, Beth, for being brave and jumping right in there and getting us started. Nice job raising your hand. And you had a follow-up question, Beth?
Not at the moment, anyway.
All right. Thank you. All right. I see, Tony, your hand's up. Would you like to unmute yourself and ask?
It was just a statement. If you're on a mobile device, like a phone, you have to go to the more button and raise hand.
Nice. Thank you, Tony.
You're right, Tony. Good work.
Yes. Good tech support. I appreciate the help. All right. I'm scanning. Any other? Uh-huh. I see a question from our friend Keith. Keith, what was, what is your question today?
Have they decided what times the services will be at the four different churches?
Yes, we have. So, I will, I will send that over to Chrissy and Christopher once again. Do you wanna tell us the service times that have been selected?
Yeah. In the FAQ, I'll refer you to that, the bottom of the first page. First Campus and Scandia at nine AM, their traditional times. Mitchell worships at eleven, and the Connection Center, of course, starts at eleven, worship begins at eleven-thirty. And we'd be able to do that because there are two clergy, not to mention other helpers. And, yeah, and staff as well. And instead of us both being at the Connection Center worship, just like we rotate back and forth between First and Scandia at nine, we would rotate back and forth between Connection Center and being at Mitchell during that later service time slot.
So, at least initially, another way of saying that is we do not anticipate a change in anybody's worship time initially.
Right now, it fits. It's a good question. Practical.
Great question. Any other questions out there? Uh-huh.
Carol's got her hand up.
Yeah, Carol's got her hand up.
There we go. All right. Carol, what is your question this morning?
Well, mine is a negative question. I've read the FAQs, and I read the purpose of this merger. But that does not give me any compelling reason for the merger. What hap, what would happen if we did not merge? I guess that's my bottom line.
The great what-if. Yes. All right. Chrissy, Christopher, would you like to field this one?
Thank you, Carol. I think that is a good question, what would happen? And again, that would, you know, that is not something that we really are authorized to say. This is something we've been asked to consider by our bishop and our district superintendent. I suppose it would be up to them to determine what would happen if we chose not to merge. And certainly, the FAQ answer to the purpose for the merger certainly is just one answer. We've talked a lot at Marquette Hope about how we feel very strongly, are passionately convicted that we are stronger together, stronger as one, as we move out of the period of mainline Protestant history, where we have all of these independent United Methodist congregations very close together. Part of it, for sure, let's be honest here, is certainly how to survive and thrive. We cannot, you know, all continue separately. And that is, as you point out, kind of a negative answer. However, the positive to that is how much creativity wells up when we can do things together, and what the possibilities are as we can do things together in ways they have never been considered before, as we've sort of been these siloed, separate congregations, so very close to each other geographically. And we have to sort of move out past that understanding of the mainline Protestant church in this day and time when we live. So, I guess that would be something we will certainly add to that answer, but sort of as we have understood it so far.
Um, yeah. It's kind of that, that big picture, you know, makes us more connected to communities. However, it is also a practical concern. How do we continue being United Methodist Church in all these different places? Given the demographics, given the size and status of our congregations. There's so much that we can do better together than trying to keep doing it separately and spinning wheels and being frustrated. So, really, it's trying to capitalize on strengths. And it's, in some ways, very much a return to an earlier version of Methodism, with churches deeply connected and served by the same clergy. Multi-site is just new language for circuits. And it's done a little bit differently in a different time. But it's that same root idea of knowing that we are in this together and sharing our resources, and being together, kind of in the same stream of ministry and leadership.
I, if I can jump in here, I also think it's quite related to the passage we read today in the sermon message of being a part of the great, you know, the great tree, and being together, and being rooted in the same place, the same area, right? And the chance to come together and create that wonderful tree. So, all right. Let's see. I have a couple of raised hands. Bruce, I see you there. I see Beth. I see Cheryl. And I think I see Dawn and Sandy Ballmer. So, I'm gonna go with Dawn and Sandy, because I think they've been trying to raise their hand for a little while first, and then we'll try to get to Bruce and Beth and Cheryl, okay?
Hi. I'm just wondering, because I think we need to be able to not get surprises in the middle of this thing. What sort of debt or major projects does Mitchell have? In other words, are they in need of a new roof for something big and expensive? And do they have a whole bunch of expenses that need to get covered?
Right.
Do we wanna?
Good question. Christopher, you wanna take it away?
Um, I would actually invite Rich or Al, someone who feels like that there'd be a good question for them to answer from the Mitchell part of our adoption team.
All right. Al or Rich, do you wanna jump in on this? I think we've lost Al.
Currently, we don't, we don't have any large expenses, other than regular building maintenance type issues. No, we've got, we've got everything covered. We've done upgrades to the building, new carpet, remodeled restrooms, you know, those types of things are done.
Yeah, recent vintage boilers. I remember we went on the tour. They looked shiny and pretty new.
Yeah, we've put in three new boilers, hot water heaters. Just an occasional rough leak every now and then in one area, but it's not a big deal.
That's what I wanted to know.
I figured, Dawn, I know you like to make sure that each of our buildings here are running well, so we appreciate that. All right. As promised, let's head over to our friend Bruce. Bruce, what's on your mind today?
I would, I would like, kind of, it's kind of a general question. But first, I make this kind of humorous or amusing observation, perhaps. The concept of a three-point or a four-point charge in Methodist history for eternally clergy is pretty well established in our history, but amusingly, some other churches didn't understand it. I can remember in the Navy, there were some other chaplains who came from other traditions who said, well, Reverend Pierce, what is a three-point or a four-point charge? Is that some sort of explosive device? What is it? So, anyway, we know about that, in a sense, by coming together, we're coming back to our history and our tradition. It's not, it's not extraordinary in that sense, or it's not unique in our history. But the question I would put, I know this is not answerable at the moment, but it's a sort of a down-the-road looking towards how we, as a community of four locations, will be approaching the question of the Methodist Church in the General Conference. I know the General Conference has been postponed, whether it'll be virtual next year or not, we don't know yet. But at General Conference, we do anticipate that the church will probably be dividing. And I wonder how our, how our four communities here are looking towards that, and what we think is gonna happen in regard to this planting of this, this particular coordination of four churches in that overall event in the Methodist Church.
I think I'll take the dog for a walk.
Well, certainly, there will be some moments of decision following the postponed General Conference. That we know, although we don't know what exactly that will look like for the entire denomination. All I can say is, the clergy of Marquette Hope are United Methodist pastors and intend to remain so.
You have to have this. You have to have this on me.
And as a multi-site, which is, even though, whether it has three, four, or seventeen campuses, it's one congregation. So, its future would be one, regardless of how many locations there are.
We, I guess we could only say, we would have no intention to lead this congregation out of the denomination if that were something that was a consensus or a decision that the congregation wanted to do. Then that would involve, you know, a conversation with the bishop and different clergy leadership. Who knows? And again, again, it's so hard to talk about it, because there's so much we don't know. But it is not our desire to lead the congregation out of the denomination, I guess, is all we can say now.
That's unanswered to, like you said, kind of an unanswerable question at this time.
Yeah. And I feel as though, whether we were three campuses in one or four campuses in one, it's a question that we'd all be asking anyways. So, it's a question that we all can't answer, regardless of whether we're together or not. So, yeah. All right. So, I have two more raised hands that I can see, Cheryl and Beth. Let me just scan to see if there's anyone else real quick. All right. So, Cheryl, let's, let's have you voice your question for now.
Well, as my past life as a negotiator, I am hoping that the increased responsibility would also mean more financial remuneration for our pastors.
Oh, Cheryl, we, so nice that we sent you that lay to wear today, as you asked that important question. You know, people have actually asked that, you know, and we don't anticipate or expect any change in our staff's salaries as a result of changes to, you know, our job description. That would be, you know, something Leadership Board would handle down the road. We just, we just would simply work together as a staff to do the work that needs to be done, and work with a very strong volunteer network that we have in place. If down the road, we needed additional staff, or to train and commission additional volunteers, we would do that. But it sort of dovetails into one of the frequently asked questions about, you know, what happens when we are no longer the pastors of Marquette Hope, one day, when that happens? And obviously, to us, the answer is the same as it would be serving any church. The bishop and the cabinet, and the district superintendent, and the leadership board would work to find appropriate staffing in whatever configuration that would be. Certainly, with a composite multi-site like this, the staffing opportunities are many and are really exciting. And just an example of being Erica's field placement with us in a clergy capacity this fall, you know, that's a really exciting staffing opportunity we have. So, yeah, so we don't, there is not any conversation about that. That is not our desire. We love being here in Marquette, and we love being at this, doing this multi-site work, which we didn't know was our passion, but the more we do it, the more it makes sense to us. And we, we really enjoy this work of coming together.
I think it also, if we are in a four-campus configuration, better utilizes the time and energy of two elders. We're the only two elder appointment anywhere around for hundreds of miles. And so, I feel like we can capitalize on that. And adding an extra location helps us be used effectively. It's good stewardship.
Well, I still want to repeat, there are increased responsibilities, and there should be an increase in pay.
We'll take that as a vote of support.
Thanks, Cheryl.
Thank you.
Thanks to your question, Cheryl. All right. I have Beth on deck.
Happy birthday, Cheryl.
Oh.
Today. Hey, seventy-five and still alive.
Hey, that's something to celebrate, for sure. All right. So, Beth, I have you up next. And right after Beth, I got a question in the chat box that we'll get to right after that. So, Beth, go ahead. What is your question today?
My, my question is more of a comment here. I just wanted to let you know, for the Nagani Mitchell Church campus, it has a little bit of change versus the old summertime worship, which used to be at ten o'clock. So, now we're staying at eleven throughout the whole year.
Thank you, Beth. Appreciate that point. Short answer would be yes. We would probably have to stay at eleven through the whole year. But we can, we will work, we can look at that when we come into next summer and see if there are ways to negotiate that. But short answer would be yes, to make things work on the schedule as it's currently envisioned.
I understand. The main reason I asked that question was I know that the sanctuary, we have fans, but we don't have ACs.
Amen.
No other campus does either.
I'm just curious about that. Thanks.
Environment is always a good concern.
All right. Al, I think, go ahead, Al.
On Beth's question.
Yeah.
The time change has been debated and discussed for the last several years at Mitchell. It was easier not to make, or it was easier to leave things as they were at that point, and not to bother with reversing and going and staying with the eleven o'clock. But I'm sure that most people in, at Mitchell, would be very, very in favor of staying with the eleven o'clock service. So, that should, that should not really be a problem for us.
That's a good place, just to mention that a multi-site church is like a big family. And so, everybody gets some things that are really important to them, and then everyone sometimes has to make some compromises. That's how family works. So, you have worship times, that's one of the, one of the conversations we have pretty frequently. And as we share, members of our staff, you know, that dictates, you know, our staff have not been able to figure out how to be in more than one place at one time. And so, sharing staff has dictated some of our worship times. But again, those are things down the road that certainly are all, you know, able to be looked at and negotiated. None of that is set in stone.
Yeah, we're still working on the device from Harry Potter with Hermione that allows her to be in two places at once. She has that Hourglass, if you're familiar with the series.
Yeah.
She can flip it and be in two places at once, so she can take more classes at school. That's why she has it. So, wow. I know, I know. All right. So, a question I was asked in the chat box by Natalie and Roger. They're wondering, just a very direct question, and I think this is important. Are, is Nagani in the black or the red? So, they just are wondering about finances. Do we have anyone on the adoption team that would like to tackle this question?
Sherry can answer that one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We are in the black. We are, we have not had any concerns recently. We have, you know, in the past, we have had to ask for more compensation from our, our members, and we have always received it.
Wonderful.
We don't have it. We're just, you know, looking to the future.
All right. And a follow-up question to that was one that I think it touched on in our frequently asked questions, but maybe we can have a couple of voices from the adoption team chime in. And just the, the general question of why is this being suggested? And so, I know you mentioned, Christopher, in the welcome and the history, that it came as a question from the bishop, but, and from Scott Harmon, our DS. And just, yeah, was there anyone that would, on the adoption team, would like to elaborate on how, why are we coming together? I have my, I have my reasons. I'm really excited. But maybe some other voices that would like to chime in?
I think it would be really helpful to, since the, Scott asked the question on behalf of Mitchell folks, if some more thoughts about why the question came about from that direction? I think that'd be really helpful to hear right now.
Well, my thought is that during that assessment, which, by the way, we spent the better part of the year working on, you know, it came about that the truth is, we're an elderly church. People aren't getting any younger. We're losing key members of the church through death. There aren't a whole lot of youth coming in. And the future was looking like not very many people in the congregation. So, the thought was, by coming together, we're gonna be stronger as one. And possibly, we can do some growth. You know, right now, we're okay. But if you look into the future, you know, another five, ten years down the road, and if we keep the trend going the way it is, we're not gonna exist. So, that's, that's where we came about, and Pastor Scott did come up for one of the meetings. And, you know, like he said, well, we don't wanna close any more churches. So, that's where we're at. We're looking toward the future. And I do believe we will be stronger together than separate. It's getting harder, harder and harder to get volunteers, you know. Yeah, right. I think that's equal across the board.
Yeah, that's true. So, we'll share.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, let's try doing something different, rather than trying to do what we've inherited, that... that it's, we don't, nobody wants to be doing hospice ministry in the church, we wanna be doing something creative and new and, and correct for our time, so, yeah.
Yeah, and one reason we were so interested in this request was because it taps into that same idea of asset-based ministry. Most of the time, churches say, "We would like to do this thing," whatever it is, it's in the future, it's something we don't have, it's something we think would change everything, but we don't have it. So, there's lots of work and energy spent on trying to fill that gap between where we are and what we don't have, in order to get to that point. And that can be good goal-setting, but you can also still have a goal like that, but then ask yourself, "So, what do we have that could make that happen? And what do we have that actually opens up possibilities for ministry that we hadn't considered? Just because we thought we might wanna do that thing, and we knew we didn't have what was required to do it, but we do have these things, so that means we could actually do this, and this, and this, and this." It opens up imaginative ministry possibilities that we didn't have. So, we're always trying to look at the future of our church's ministry with that perspective, rather than trying to fill grand canyons of things we don't have to get to that other side.
And I, if I can jump in here, one of the things I'm really excited about with coming together is Nagani Mitchell is located right next to the middle school for Nagani, the city of Nagani, and as the Campus Ministry Director at Northern, I work with college students, some of them are pursuing degrees in education, and so we're looking forward to maybe the possibility of working with the education program at Northern, and the Nagani Mitchell, or the Nagani Middle School students, and using Nagani Mitchell, the location, physical location, is a place to tutor and provide after-school space for, for students. So, that just gets me all kinds of excited, you know, because the, the, the location is just so, so key, and to be able to use the building in a way that would bring in some youth. And just, I, I, I just wanna clarify, Kristi, you said a minute ago that nobody wants to do hospice ministry, and I know what you meant was, nobody wants to do hospice ministry to the church itself.
To the church itself, thank you.
Not to people who are actually hospice.
Leave us.
We will, we are definitely called to do hospice, actual hospice ministry medically, what is required, and that is definitely a calling we have, thank you for the clarification. What I mean is, we don't want to be living in a season of the church where we're just trying to wait for the church to die, as my district superintendent, Lloyd Barrett, said, you know, "If the horse dies, you have to get off the horse," and we don't wanna all just stand around and wait for that to happen and be sad. Yeah, so thank you for that clarification, absolutely, for sure. Yeah.
Yes. A second ago, I saw, Tony, I saw your hand was raised, do you have a question, Tony? Oh?
No, I'm unable to put it out, I took my hand down.
Oh, all right, thank you, all right. Let's see, anyone else that has a question that, yes, I see Bruce's hand up, and I see, is it A, Crookham?
Yes.
All right.
I, mine is more of a statement.
Okay.
I was gonna say, Mitchell has a, a great core of people who work very hard. We are not all dying, and the problem is, is that most of the people who are doing the work are doing all of the work, and that's why we thought, joining together, we might be a stronger group. I mean, we work on pasties and potato sausage, and we work the funeral dinners, and, and it just goes on and on and on. We have a wonderful group of people who love the Lord, love the church, and I don't want you to think that you're just getting a lot of baggage.
Oh, goodness. That's great.
At our church.
I appreciate that clarification. I like the way you said, "It has a great core," you know, I think, I think that's vital, you know, it's, that's definitely, definitely important. All right, Bruce, I see ya, let's, let's have your question or comment.
And I, and I think Mitchell should also say that Mitchell's not taking on a lot of baggage either.
That's right. Hit it back.
But, but I, the, the idea of, of perhaps networking the middle school is a good example, a good example of doing volunteer or ministry services across the four campuses implies that, for example, some Mitchell people with interest and skill might go over to Scandia and do something, and vice versa. So, people, the volunteer, some people who wanna do so, might float all around. The men's breakfast people, the guys from Mitchell might all go over to First, and vice versa. I mean, aren't those all possibilities?
Absolutely.
Yes, sir.
Exactly it.
All right, I see, I see two more hands, I see Susan, and I see Rob. So, Rob, I'm gonna get to you first, and Susan, you'll be right up after Rob, okay? Go ahead, Rob.
Okay. I see, I, I see in the write-up that we were sent with the questions, that membership records are gonna be transferred automatically to somewhere, and then it says, "Marquette Hope does not maintain campus-specific membership records." So, where do they all go, and who keeps them? And, I'm just interested in the, in the administration of the, of the records.
That's a good question. On paper, Marquette Hope is one congregation, so there's no sub-membership. Certainly, we keep track of folks by where they tend to worship, and the opportunities that they tend to find themselves involved in, but the membership records are for one congregation, even though it meets in three or four places. But, we do also, so, we don't, in our yearly report, say, "Scandia has this many members, and First Campus has this many members," because we are the one congregation. However, in our record-keeping, we do very much keep track of who tends to be active in one campus versus another, and certainly, the idea is to be united, but also, the local identity and congregational character of each place doesn't change, it's, it's still the same place, and that's one of the reasons why we've retained names. First Campus is still a core of folks who have known themselves as First United Methodist Church in the past, and Scandia is the same way. So, we didn't, you know, try and invent names and identities that would erase the past, we certainly honor those heritages.
Well, I would just, you know, a lot of people in my, having, since I'm a retired pastor, a lot of people used to write to get records about baptisms, or retirement and marriages, so where would they write? Who, where is this gonna be?
Sure, so...
One administrative office.
Right, so, we have one administrative office, that's one of the, sort of, the funnel points, and one of the points where we, we work as one. Also, it saves a heck of a lot of money if you only have one administrative office, so that's one of the reasons we do it, and so, so requests for baptism records, or seriously, baptism record from, from the past, would come to the one administrative office, and then the, the person in that office would find that record where it is, right? So, we would not move all of the records out of Nagani Mitchell. So, if Katie in our office, for example, got a question sometime in the future, let's say, somebody wants their baptism record, it would come probably to that Marquette Hope email or request that way, but we would go and get it. We are often in the closet under the stairs at the connection center, looking for records from, that are kept there, and the first records are still at first. So, we don't physically move all of those records, because we can't store them all in one place, but the communication is streamlined as far as that goes. So, we have to do a lot of this, like, okay, your loved one was baptized in Scandia in 1918, Scandia is now a part of Marquette Hope, same building, but now this is the, the congregational name, so, does that help? Okay, all right.
Great question, Robert. All right, so I wanna be mindful of Nagani Mitchell's service is starting 11:15, and recognizing we only have a few moments left, and yet we still have some hands raised and some people who have not had a chance to speak. And so, if we did not get to you today in your questions or your comments, we would really encourage you to reach out by phone or by email, so that we can be in touch with you, and get them on our radar for future town hall meetings, especially if it's a question that we need some time to do some research on, and to, to talk about as an adoption team. But with that, I know, Rob, you're on the adoption team, Rob Veal, I wanted to take a moment to invite you to ask your, your question or have your comment.
Thank you. Mine is more of a statement too, and that is, I've been part of some significant mergers in the past, particularly Tilden and Empire coming together. My, my thought on, on, on this is that all of us together are stronger than any one of us separate. We desire at Mitchell to be positive influence in our community, and so we, we would, we will survive however we do this, this was the way that I think makes the most sense. But, the work for us to come together, to serve the common vision as Christians, to treat each other, and to treat our people around us as we treat ourselves, is just beginning. Mergers just don't happen, adoptions just don't happen, the work happens when we start working together and making this successful. I do believe, all of us together, and we're representing quite a bit of Marquette County here now, will be stronger together than if we went off separately. And I look forward to working with everyone to make this a positive thing for us as individuals, but more importantly, for our community too. We provide a lot of good, principle-based leadership, and that's important.
Right, thank you so much, Rob. And with that, we are right at the magical moment of 11:15, and to keep Nagani Mitchell moving forward with their traditional worship time. And again, Marquette Hope, folks, you are all invited to be a part of Nagani Mitchell, just stay on the same Zoom call that we're on, not right now, and you'll have a chance to have some more together time as we, as we get this merger going. So, Kristi, Christopher, just any last thoughts from you guys to share before we switch things over?
I just wanna say thank you, Erica, for hosting us and getting us through this time together, and we really do appreciate all of your questions. We don't pretend that we are, you know, able to think of everything and anticipate everything, so keep those questions coming to us as you think about this time today.
Yeah, and as we have new opportunities to gather, hopefully some ways in person very soon, let's just keep talking about these things. So, this town hall meeting, as we've said, is just the beginning of the conversations, looking ahead to a decision point, probably in the early fall, when we would actually have this as an action item and a vote.
All right. Well, Susan, I know you're one of the few folks we did not get to that had your hand raised, and so I do apologize for that. If you're able to email or give us a call with your questions or comments, we would love to hear from you. And with that, Pastor Albert, I am going to transfer the hosting capabilities to you, and you will be able to start your worship service, if I can figure out how to do it.
In the participant list?
Yes.
Yeah.
Going. All right, it was seamless until this moment. All right.